Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, meeting of the Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board. Delise is not able to be with us this evening, but we have a quorum with six of seven members. So let's start with the business session. I believe the meeting agenda will stand as it was presented to us. Does anyone have any changes that I'm unaware of? Okay, so the agenda remains as posted. Meeting notes, you've all had a chance to look over Jim's meeting notes. Are there any comments, corrections? Could I have a motion then to accept the meeting notes as submitted?
So move, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries unanimously. You've all had a chance, I hope, to look at the June 20 minutes in draft form. Any comments, edits, corrections? additions? Hearing none, could I have a motion to accept the June 20 minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Edna. Second, please.
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries unanimously. Correspondence and announcements, I have none. Except, as Jim was mentioning earlier, that we are still up in the air as to whether the next meeting, which would be July 18th, will be in person or virtual. That will depend on the governor's decision, which typically has been coming closer to the date of the end of the extension, which we think is the 14th or the 15th. So stay tuned and watch your inbox for details about when, where the next meeting would be. Okay, we have no new applications, so we have a bit of time. I don't think there's anything we can cover. In the meantime, is there? Jim?
It's a good point. We do have a bit of time, don't we?
We do, with no new applications. Do we?
I mean, we could, we could, we could discuss the referral if you wanted to. I don't know if you want to wait till the end or not. That's not a timed issue. But I don't know if you want to do that or not.
Actually, if it's at all helpful, I've been meaning to bring this up in past few meetings. We're supposed to have some professional development time or continuous learning or something like that. Is there any way, just with the 10 minutes or so that we have, we can maybe discuss that? Anybody offer ideas, trainings that they've done?
Absolutely. Do you want to start off?
I, well, that's, I, I don't know where to turn for this. I know that Jim had given a packet at the, at the beginning, and I, I've read through it, but if there are resources that he can point us to, that would be useful. I'd like to make note of them, maybe exploit that.
The Dutchess County Planning Federation, I believe it's called, does training opportunities that Gretchen will send out to you periodically. I think you've had a couple of those come by your email. I know John Lyons and myself have been asked to do a couple of trainings in the past, and for whatever reason here or there, it just hasn't happened, but we know there are some topics we want to discuss. I'd actually have to go back to my notes and see what those were. But I don't, I know we do all the planning boards and potential training opportunities, so I should talk with him and really try and make that happen.
And let me add that what we have done in the past, I, people were finding the, although the ones for the Planning Federation are generally very good, many people were expressing the opinion that they wanted to have training sessions that were more relevant to what was going on in the local community, things that were coming before us regularly that we needed more information about. And we also were finding that it was nice to present these training sessions jointly with the Village Planning Board, so that we were looking at some of the same things. As, as the village goes, so goes the town and vice versa, I like to think. So it's, it's nice to be getting the same kind of training. So other planning board members, do you have comments or suggestions? None? All right.
There's one thing that I could mention, that is the Pace University Land Use Law Center. I would get on their website. They, they often sponsor things that could be helpful. For example, they've done ones on affordable housing.
That's great. Thank you, Edna. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Pace University Land Use Law Center?
Exactly, yeah.
Great.
I'll send you Tiffany Zazula's email and telephone number.
Okay.
Melody, another possibility, if we're looking for a topic, is with the new NRI that the town has adopted, it's been put out, it's excellent. Perhaps a training session and how we could use that when we're doing site visits and we're trying to assess environmental issues, potential impacts, potential mitigation measures, things like that. It's an excellent, excellent work that's been put together with the information, and it'd be good to maybe bring us all up to speed. I'm sure the C A B would, would benefit from it as well about how that can be employed when we do our site visits and we try to, you know, psych out what might be problematic from an environmental standpoint.
So are you, are you suggesting that maybe the team that worked on that could walk us through the NRI?
They could walk us through it, and I think we also just sort of need to look at what we have in our zoning law for how, the sort of things we're supposed to look for. And because it's pretty detailed on that, and how the NRI, the new NRI can help us to get that information that the, our zoning law under Habitat and whatnot basically tasks us with looking into and trying to figure out exactly what's going on with it and what might happen, given a particular development and how we can identify the negative impacts if there are any, and how we might find ways to mitigate those impacts.
Jim, do you think that that would be helpful to the Citizens Advisory Committee? As well?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if, if we did a training on that, we'd open that up to all boards and committees, anyone that would be interested in participating in that. So we can definitely, definitely do that. I was just gonna say, the, the county is also doing a countywide NRI that I'm keeping my eye on. It's, it's under development, it's not done. But that'll be something we can look at too, when that, when that's developed, or if there are public meetings and things like that for it as they go along.
Jim, include HAPAC where you think it's appropriate, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I was just reminded that all planning board members need to take the P E S H training and sexual harassment training. So, don't know if this counts toward your credits, but it is one you need to take.
No.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think Gretchen set up the schedule for those, so make sure to check your email from Gretchen and make sure to be able to check that one off.
Maybe Gretchen, it would be helpful if you could resend that notice. I know I saw it, but I'm sure it's buried in my emails, and I, I know that there were some dates given out, so. And while we still have a few minutes, do planning board members with this type of training, you know, it's theoretically four hours in the course of a year. Typically, the training sessions are usually about two hours long, if you go to the Planning Federation, or as we presented them. Do do people prefer? You know, if we were to schedule it in-house, say, on the NRI, do you prefer them in the evening? Do you prefer them in late afternoon? If we were to schedule something, what, what works best for everyone? We don't typically tag it onto a meeting because it's just too much, too much time invested. So what is, what is your preference? A weekday, late afternoon, weekday, another off week of planning board meetings? Can I get a sense from everybody of what works for them?
I'm usually good for any time after four, unless it's on a Tuesday. But yeah, early, late afternoon, early evening would work for me, and I, I think that, that's good because it gives us some time to digest, maybe a couple of us go out for drinks afterward and talk about things that we learned. I, I think that would be a positive thing.
And maybe off week from planning board meetings is good too, so we don't get too crowded with, you know, meetings.
Yeah.
Others with a 4:30 to 6:30 on an off week, weekday, be acceptable to most people?
It would be good for me, assuming, you know, I don't have something else on the calendar.
Right.
I think that's good, Melody.
All right, well, suppose we ask Jim to do a little homework for us and reach out to the folks who led the NRI effort, see if they're available to do that, and then we can put out some dates, some possible dates, and see if we can get something rolling. Thanks, Craig, for bringing that up.
Melody?
Yes, Edna.
Just for the public, NRI means natural resource inventory?
Yes, it does. Jim, has it been posted on the website?
Yes. Yep, it's, it's done, it's completed, it's posted. I believe it has its own website, and I believe there's a link to it on the town's website as well.
Okay, so for the public, if you're interested in taking a look at this new document that's available, you can look for it on the website. And if you have trouble, then try and get in touch with Gretchen at Town Hall, and we'll see if we can make sure you get a hold of it. Okay. Getting close.
Melody, I don't really have anything else. I think we just have to give another minute or two.
Yeah, we'll give it another minute.
Get into the public hearing.
Then I'll talk very, very slowly. You think we're okay to start, Jim?
Six fifteen by my watch.
Okay, that's the, Jim's the official timekeeper, so we can move now to the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first public hearing scheduled for this evening is Gary Meek, 399 Mill Road, Site Plan Review, HVAC Installation. And I know I saw Gary here. So I'll turn it over to Gary. Gary, do you want to give us a brief explanation again? I know you have already of what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The, as the picture shows, it's the installation of a new track unit below the kitchen window. In my house, the central area of the loft was completely refurbished, and so we're able to put some A track into the loft space that's above the kitchen only. Unfortunately, although we would like to place this unit at the back of the house, directly behind the house is our seating patio lunch area and some broccoli garden area. So we determined it just wasn't feasible to put the exterior condenser unit adjacent to or on the patio. We're really the only other places for it, so reluctantly we decided to place it here. And as you can clearly see from the picture, we've already installed a, a couple of boxwood bushes. You can see those boxwood bushes there. Unfortunately, we can't install a third bush to completely hide the unit because the fuel oil filler is just above where you can see that white bolts. So there has to be access there. But we can do some screening of the white bolts because we don't like it. That's the most important point. Other than that, it, it's, it's a fairly small item, and we've already started to do various plantings in the front that were shown on the other photographs. The house is a little bit open to the road as it stands.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Jim, any comments?
No, no comments. I didn't really have any initially. I don't have any follow-up comments.
Oh, was a site visit made?
Well, kind of, yes. Since I forgot all about it, we decided maybe a drive-by was all that was needed, and you can see from the depiction here, this is virtually invisible. The only reason it's really before us is because it's on a scenic road, and more landscaping is going in. So I, I think this is one of those situations where there's, there are really no issues with this whatsoever. I, I don't see any, any problems with this whatsoever.
Okay. Kathy, I believe we received a response from HAPAC.
You did, and we found no issues either. Both in terms of visibility from the road as well as replacement, should, you know, such a thing be necessary in the future? So no issues.
Okay. Any comments or questions from planning board members?
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, it looks to me as though the, the due amount of respect is being paid to the fact that this installation is on a scenic road and efforts are being made to screen it. And I think that's proper treatment for this type of an installation.
I would also comment, and Gary, I'm, I'm, I think I'm saying this correctly. My understanding is also that you will be changing out the windows to the right of the door. Is that correct? And they will be more in conformance with the windows that we see to the right?
Yeah, that's already been done.
Oh, that's already been done. So Mr. Meek is also making an effort, I think, to change the windows up so that, again, so that they read better with the rest of the house, and I think that's a, a nod toward improving that facade. So other planning board members, comments? Jim, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment?
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute your line. I don't see anyone, Melody.
Okay, um, then I think we're ready to move to close the public hearing, but I have a motion to do so.
I'm moved.
Motion by Craig, second.
Second.
By Michael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tension, motion carries, public hearing is closed. Jim, we have an approval resolution. If you'd like to walk us through that, please.
If you do. Draft approval resolution for your consideration tonight for site plan approval for Gary Meek for the HVAC unit at 339 Mill Road. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker. Based upon review of the submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAPAC and C A B on site visits, find the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, we're asking the planning board to find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with chapter 125 and prove the application inclusive of the materials dated May 10th, 2022. And authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the submission materials on the applicant satisfaction of the three conditions listed on the resolution.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept, approve the resolution.
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Second, please.
Second, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. I'll pull the board. Michael?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Motion carries. Good luck, Gary.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Next up, Erica Serrano and Doug Folger, 126 Cedar Heights Road, Site Plan Review and Wetlands Permit to Construct an S F D, Single Family Dwelling. So who is here?
My name is Joe Zarecki. I don't know if you can hear me. The engineer for the project.
Okay, Joe?
And yes, we have a 27, approximately 27 acre parcel vacant land that the client would like to develop, put a house on it with a driveway. We've been through the process, and we had the wetlands and the buffers all designated and labeled on our plan. And we have an entrance on the road that I believe the planning board members went out to look at it. And I think, I think we're in a home stretch, I believe, and pretty much that's it.
Okay. Jim?
Also, I don't have any additional comments since the last time we discussed it last month. I guess in general, I can say my, you know, review of this application and the new delineation, it does appear that what they're proposing would intrude into the buffer less than what is currently approved. So there is an approved plan for this, this site. So they're coming in for essentially a change to that approved site plan. And so it looks like my wetlands permit approval. So again, based on my, my review, I do think that they have less wetland impacts. Beyond that, I don't really see any other significant issues.
Um. All right, I think at some point, Jim, I'll come back to you because I believe we received a letter from C P L.
Yes, well, we do. Yes, we do have engineering questions and issues.
Let, let's circle back to that in a minute. Site, site visits were conducted by anyone? So these were not as.
Joe, Joe and Sean.
I'm on mute. I'm on mute. Sorry.
I'll, I'll let Joe go because I was there for a brief.
Sean had an emergency, so I, I did the property walk. So it's a vacant, beautiful rolling meadow. The house is going to be built on pretty much the, it looks like the highest part of the property in the back. The move of the driveway, while Jim just pointed out that it is less of intrusion on the wetlands buffer. It, the, the reason why the, the driveway couldn't be kind of even more in the center of the property is there's a, there's a berm that comes right up from the road, and it kind of climbs, so in order to not have to move a lot of earth, they've moved it over to slightly intrude on the buffer, but then the, the driveway kind of rolls along the side of a hill or along, not in the, the highest part, and then it wraps up to where the house is going to be. It makes sense because there's also a easement for the utilities that comes across the property, and there are some utility poles that are kind of in the middle of that road frontage there. So it seems like that's the best place that they actually get at the entrance of the driveway from what, where the redrawn wetlands are. Because the old property, the old driveway, it kind of goes through that red wetlands that's, I think, newly drawn compared to what we saw before, if I'm not mistaken. But in general, it seemed like they had thought it through, and there wasn't really too many concerns with what they had proposed.
Okay, Sean, anything you want to add?
I don't have anything further to add, no.
Okay. Do we have, do we have responses from any of the committees? HAPAC, C A B?
Well, this, this wouldn't have been reviewed by HAPAC. I don't think received anything from C A B. Gretchen? Remember?
We, I think we might have on this.
Okay, well, Gretchen, while you're looking, I'm going to ask Jim to just review the C P L letter in terms of the questions they raised, which I believe were engineering questions.
They were. One second.
I think, I think it was circulated to planning board members.
It was.
Yes. All right, so the memo from Christian, the town engineering consultant, took a look at this and talked about wanting to ensure that how a superintendent has been consulted regarding the relocation, making sure that the driveway entrance location has notes showing that they're going to abandon, restore the existing driveway cut. They need to get a utility easement sign-off. We're going through the easement for this. If driveways are exceeding 6% grade, they need to be paved, so we need to get some information on that. The A F indicated health department approvals needed for the water supply sewage disposal. However, the plan indicates there were approved locations for the well and S D S. So he was asking for paperwork on that, just clarifying what is going on with that. And then said the proposed project, limited disturbance is 1.9 acres and coverage under a New York City, D E C general permit is needed, as well as a basic SWIP. These are engineering issues that we don't typically get super involved in, but there are issues that will need to be addressed by the applicant, I think, for they can get their building permit. And may I have, I have a question, if I may?
Sure, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, for number four, with the 6% grade, obviously, they would like to have a gravel driveway. And where it's over 6%, we have a section in the middle of the driveway that's like 8%. We could either change the grade of the driveway to be 6%, it's not a big deal. Or we can go with the code where it says that if it doesn't wash into the main road and demonstrate that, that 8% would be permitted. I'm just wondering how that, if, if we change the grade to 6%, or we can show the highway superintendent that he's not going to have any runoff into the road, which he won't because it's in the middle, which one the board would prefer?
Well, I think the issue is the code states that driveways exceeding 6% grade need to be paved regardless of where it is. It's a general statement, so.
Right, but it does.
I think you're gonna have to.
In that section, as it calls, it also says if you can demonstrate that there's not going to be any runoff into the road.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, my, my answer would be if you can, you know, meet up with, with Christian, the town engineering consultant, to make sure he's okay with the highway superintendent, or that would probably address that issue. Again, it's an engineering issue, it kind of generally goes beyond the planning board, but it is something that would have to be addressed. Gotcha. Satisfaction.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Uh, Melody, uh, this is Joe again. One other thing that came up on the site visit, uh, the fence that they're gonna be putting in for their pool, it's pretty expansive. You can see it on the, the site plan, the dotted line arc goes within the tree line. But it's also within the, the buffer. So do we have concerns of like what that's made of, how that's going to be done? I didn't know the answer when I was out there.
Yeah, that's a four-foot fence. It's not that high. And it's just for protection on that area. So yes, that's a question you have, and the C L P is not going to have a problem with it if it is under four feet. I mean, the land trust.
It will require a wetland permit, however, for installation.
They are applying for wetlands permit as part of this application.
Okay.
So the wetlands permit will cover the fence?
Um, I, I was assuming the wetlands, yeah, it's going to cover their, their well and buffer intrusions, which can be the driveway and fence.
So they would, they would both be combined in that permit? That's a yes?
That was my assumption, yes.
Michael, do you see an issue with that?
No, I think it can both be in the permit, but they just have to both be in the permit. That's all. Otherwise, they'd have to come back again.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Yep, yes, it does. I didn't see, I didn't see it listed, so I wasn't sure.
Okay, thanks for raising that question. Questions or comments from planning board members? We find ourselves in a position of perhaps being able to move this along with a conditional approval pending the applicant's ability to satisfy the questions raised by C P L. Is that something, Joe, that you feel you can reach out to C P L and work through those questions with them?
That should not be a problem, then.
Does anyone have any objections proceeding in that direction?
Jim made a couple of comments. Will they be addressed?
Jim? Do you want to repeat your comments? So we're sure we have them?
Which ones? Let's see. Right, so we went through the discussion of the intrusion in the buffer area, and we believe that it is intruding less than it was. So I think that's covered. The relocation house for the back on the lot for that higher ground, I did bring that up last time. I didn't hear any major concerns. It is in generally the same area as the previous house. I didn't hear any major concerns. It is in generally the same area as the previous house. The previous house was proposed, I should say, I believe, so. There was that comment last time. I did get the clarification on the June 6 versus the updated home design. Just one was showing what was originally proposed and then updating that to show that they're actually proposing building footprint that is less than what had originally been proposed. And then the written letter from Winnicky Land Trust. I, I was asking that we get an updated letter. Saying that they're okay with the proposed changes. I don't know, Joe, do we, did you have that?
We're, we're on board with them and they have their meeting on the 12th, so we, they want to meet and then they'll provide us the information. Everything looks good to them. It's just they have a formal meeting on the 12th, so we'll have that.
So we can add that as part of the conditional approval?
As a condition, right.
Any, anything else? Go ahead.
I was just saying, the only other thought I have about doing this is the conditional approval is that this is already an approved lot for a single family home under the previous one. So it's not, you know, it's not a new application per se. We're revising a previous approval in a way, so.
So what would we be voting on?
Well, so you're still voting on a site plan, what is permit, but I'm just saying, it, it, it has already been approved for, for a home. So I don't know if that changed anyone's thoughts on it or if it matters, but just wanted to raise that.
I, I personally would like to see the questions answered by CPL. I don't think they're onerous. And apparently, we have to be waiting until the 12th of July anyway to get the Winnicky letter. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with a conditional. But I, I do want to also ask if there's anyone from the public here, Jim?
If we can do that, but before I do, Joe, just so you know, if we do a conditional approval and you don't get one of those items met, you would have to come back before the planning board to, to address those issues.
That's correct. I, I understand. Thank you.
Understand that. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, please either raise your hand or unmute your line.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So move, Michael.
Thank you, Edna, all those in favor? Posed extension, the motion carries, public hearing is closed. And Jim has before us the draft approval resolution. And Jim, you can walk us through it and tell us what you're making conditional.
Yep, so draft approval resolution for site plan wetlands permit for 126 Cedar Heights Road. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker, based upon the review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members, CAB members, and others on their visit to the property, finding that proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for wetlands permits authorized work, and I will define this a little further, find that the proposed work and intended use, including the driveway and fence, are consistent with the requirements for wetland permits set forth in chapter 120. And requesting the, the planning board grant the requested wetlands permit conditioned upon receipt of site plan approval. With respect to site plan approval, asking the planning board to find the proposed work and intended use consistent with chapter 125 and approve the application inclusive of the materials and plans, as the record and associates stated April 14th, 2022. Conditioned upon the applicant satisfying the comments raised by CPL and ensuring that they get a letter from the Winnicky Land Trust stating that they are okay with the proposed changes as well. And asking the planning board authorized the chair to stamp and sign the site plan upon the satisfaction of three below conditions, as well as the new conditional statement that I just added above.
Could I have a motion to adopt the draft approval resolution?
So move, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please. Thanks, Sean. I'll pull the board. Craig?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Edna?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I vote I. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, members. I appreciate your help.
The next public hearing is Amy Koppelman, 500 Route 308, site plan review. The addition of French doors and the replacement of garage doors on a historic house. Good evening. Hello, Tim.
Good evening.
Okay. Do you want to make a review again for us, the proposal here?
Sure. So the, the project involves some proposed alterations to the existing residence at 500 Route 308. The building was originally constructed as part of what's known as the Grove Estate, which was primarily, it was a large estate in the area that consisted of three primary components. This carriage house building, which was the last main portion built, there was a tenant house building and then the Grove Mansion, which is kind of around the, to the east of this property towards downstream. And there were some indications that this building, which was constructed in the late 1800s, right at kind of the end of the estate era, was designed by McKim Meeden, what, McKim Meeden White, when they were doing other work in the area. And so the proposal is, as you can see in this drawing, along the north facade of the building is to install three French doors to allow access to the, essentially the front yard of the house from the interior. Currently, there is no access on the, on that side of the house. There's only an entrance on the driveway on the east side and some doors in the back, which is currently kind of like the backyard with a pool area. The other piece of the proposal is to modify the garage doors, which are on the southwest side of the building to enable installation of an overhead door to provide clearance to get modern vehicles into it. The existing doors, you can see there on the left side image are very large swinging doors. You basically have to open one door at a time by hand. They're narrow, they're only eight feet wide, so it's pretty tight to get a modern vehicle in there. So the plan is to eliminate one of the piers and install one large overhead door to allow the entry in there. And that is really the, some of the project.
Thank you. Jim, comments?
No new comments since last time. I really was kind of referring to the fact that I think this is primarily related to store preservation, HAPAC input and related elements and discussions. Nothing really from a planning perspective in terms of setbacks.
Okay, I, I think I turn it over. Kathy, we have a HAPAC report?
We, we have a site plan report.
I was getting to that. I, I, does it matter to you, Edna, which order I go in?
Well, we took a couple of photographs and I guess it might help everybody understand the situation more fully.
Then go ahead, Edna.
Oh, Jim, do we have the photos?
Yep, just have to give me one second to pull those up.
The one that's on top here is, you know, facing, essentially facing the rotor is the front of the, of the building.
Okay, and these are your pictures now.
Great, and then can we go to the next one? That's not the next one. This is the interior room that needs more light. You could, you can understand why the applicant would like to add some kind of glass to add light to this room. It actually looks lighter here than when we were visiting it. It's quite dark. And then the, the third photo, Jim. This is an example of these, I guess I'll call them patio doors with transoms, which is what is suggested for the front of the building. Joe, can you cover the garage doors and maybe we'd go back to the garage door drawing?
Yep, sure thing. Yeah, the, the garage doors, as was stated earlier, are basically swinging kind of barn doors. And they're very narrow. The applicant has to get out of their car to open them by hand to barely fit two cars through these doors. So they'll be removing that, that middle pier and putting one large overhead door that will be, you know, operated by, with an electric door opener. That's really what's the, the gist of what's happening. It's nothing happening inside the garage. It's just making it more usable for a modern family.
So my only concern about the application was the use of what are, what looked like and are essentially patio doors, which seem more appropriate for egress to a pool or a patio at the front of the building. And I'm very interested to hear what HAPAC might have to say about that.
With regard to the garage doors, are you speaking?
I'm talking about the front of the house.
All right, is it my turn now?
I'm finished.
All right, and let me speak to that. There are two reports submitted to the planning board. One in March, when we visited with Mr. Lynch, and then one today with regard to the front facade, which is of the, you know, the most significant concern for HAPAC, because that is the only extant facade of this building that has survived from the original design by Stanford White and McKim Meeden White. So we did, in both of our reports to the commit, to the planning board, stress strongly that we would encourage the applicant and the engineer architect consider leaving that facade untouched, because it is all that is left originally. The garage doors and much of the rest of the building has been significantly altered. This facade has not. And so we encourage the consideration on the part of the applicant and part of the designers to consider leaving it intact. Thank you, Edna. That was my perspective, our perspective.
Okay. Um, I'll open it up now to questions or comments from other planning board members, unless there's something coming out of the site visit that others would like to offer. If not, I'll open it up.
I will say just one extra thing that the applicant said while we were there is they, they have this amazing front yard. The long yard, like lawn, that they don't really have access to because they don't have a doorway out to it. So that is one consideration of why they want to put these doors. And also, as Edna said, that picture that she took of the dining room doesn't do it justice. It was very dark in there with the small windows. So that was also a concern. They said they don't even use their dining room because of that. It's just a very dreary kind of room, so. Those both came up on the site visit.
Well, thank you, Joe. I would repeat that in the history, both of this estate and of this Stanford White building, this is all that is left from the original design. And so it is difficult to see the adaptation of this, excuse me, of this facade in a way that essentially takes away the last of the sense of the history and the architecture of it. Thanks.
Yeah, is, I believe this is listed on the National Register. This is another National Register property in Rhinebeck.
It is.
And, you know, to say that.
Is part of a listing on the National Register. The building is not registered. It has no national significance. There's no state significance. The only significance is local.
Okay.
Confirm that. This was a utility building. I have seen no actual documentation other than rumor, basically, that it was actually White, it's his office, Kim Meeden White that designed it. And this, that's some barn stalls and windows above that we're trying to protect to avoid putting, you know, making something useful for the owners of the building.
Okay, how many?
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like Craig to be able to finish, Tim. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, do you know how many carriage houses Stanford White designed?
I have no idea. Do you know how many?
I don't, but I think this is probably an exceptional example.
It is an exceptional example.
Tim, 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 may I recognize people as they wish to speak? Craig finished. Kathy wanted to offer some information. If, if you acknowledge when you want to speak, Tim, I'll get to you. Kathy?
Well, it is unusual that a building of this use and type would have been assigned to McKim Meeden White and to Stanford White. So it means that there was importance attached to it, Tim. I'm just saying, as we did when we were there, and it has kind of weight and importance that carriage barns usually did not have. And to refer to it as a house is a later use. Not what it was designed as. Thank you, Melody.
Okay, Tim?
Well, I, I still question how much involvement they actually had with this. This building is a utility structure. It was purposefully hidden. It was never intended to be viewed. It has no really any realistic possibility of anybody viewing it in the future. It's private property. It's a, basically a large barn was what it was built as with some detailing, yes, that was attributable to that vintage and the people that were working in the area. But there's, there are no drawings, to my knowledge, that have any kind of McKim Meeden White, you know, title block, logo, anything. There's one foundation drawing that appears to be done by somebody that's hanging on a wall there. Other than that, it's just, it looks like a lot of details that were done in the area at the same time. And I really think that the importance of those windows is greatly overstated by the committee.
Okay, I would just have to say that in looking at this facade, it tells me that it was a carriage house and that those windows appeared above horse stalls.
Yeah.
True, that's just now there's still, there's going to remain four of them. It still gives you that sense of what it was.
Yeah, but it's an intervention which alters the integrity of the structure. And I think for an important structure, that's the work of a master. I, I think you need to tread very carefully.
Well, I, again, question whether it's actually the work of a master, but and maybe, may have been done out of his office. There may have been some drawings that existed there. It's got details similar to other things. But I, it hasn't been noted as any kind of significant work of that office other than in the, the listing. By local people, their name was inserted in there. And there's been no corroboration by, of any other kind that references that shows this as being actually the work of that officer, of any kind of significant work of their office.
Well, I wouldn't, let me, I would like to just make one comment, and that is that not to argue your point that it is documented or not documented as McKim Meeden White. I think the quality and the design of this building as a carriage house at the end of the Gilded Age period stands on its own merits. This is a significantly important carriage barn in the history of Rhinebeck and in a very important location in the very important estate. So I echo Craig and Kathy's concerns about the significant change to this elevation, which essentially is the last remaining statement of whoever the architect was, but a very accomplished person at that.
Melody, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The two large windows to the far right, are those original to the building?
No.
Now, if an entrance is required from this facade, could that not be?
Directly contradicts the statement that was just made, that that facade is all original.
No, it, well, I, is, what is the answer to Michael's question? Are those two windows original?
No, nobody here knows the answer to that question.
All right, Kathy is saying no.
No, not from the drawings that I've seen, Mr. Lynch, I think, but I'm. No, not from the drawings that I've seen, Mr. Lynch, I think, but I'm more than willing to admit I could be wrong. And I'm willing to go and do more research on it, but I believe not. Nomination.
If I could continue for a moment?
Michael, please do.
Thank you. Assuming they are not original and obviously put in for some other purpose. And if access from this facade of the building to the front is important, and I understand that's coming. Clearly, the other windows, it's their consistency across that portion of the building. Which basically is the statement that they make that this was a carriage house. Clearly, the ones on the far right hand do not. So it would seem to me that if access from this facade of the building to the front of the property is important, and I can understand it may well be. Some working with those windows which are already there may not be original, but obviously are not part of the stable area in terms of lighting. Might be something to consider that that would be a perhaps a much lesser impact on the visual significance of this building. And would actually keep intact the portion which really does state quite clearly this was a stable for a carriage house.
Okay.
I have a comment. I have a question for the board. What about the desire of the applicant to add light to a dining room? Which they wish to use and which now is quite dark.
What's your point?
Well, my point is. Is the planning board willing to say? That's unfortunate, but we don't see any way for you to have more light in your dining room.
Buy a lamp. There are other, I mean, there are alternatives to. Cutting open the cutting open the facade.
I agree.
What would that be? I couldn't come up with anyone when I was there. I'm looking at the roof and you don't want a skylight in the roof.
Edna, if you weigh. Regardless of what Mr. Lynch is arguing one way or another, the contemporary. Request for more light in a dining room against the importance of this historic facade. You would come down as a member of the planning board on the side of. More lighting in a dining room established on the interior much later than the purpose was. For the building as it was originally designed. Is that fair to?
I simply, I find it very difficult to ignore. What seemed to me to be a reasonable desire for more light in the dining room. I don't know if there is any way. To put a more appropriate door in and leave all of the windows without touching the windows. I'm just wondering if there is an alternative or.
Well, they're not touching any of the stable windows. If you look at the design, it's the insertion of three French doors that.
I I'm not suggesting that that is the solution. I'm saying maybe there is a solution that puts a more appropriate door in place. That does not touch the existing windows, leaves them all in a row and still somehow provides more light into the dining room.
I mean, the overall design of this building is for. For circulation of horses and carriages, I would imagine. And. Light was not a priority in. The original design of this building. And what the applicant is trying to do is shorn a different use into this historic building. And some uses are compatible and some are less compatible and I would suggest. That having a bright dining room that's lit with natural light when the sun is out. Is. Not a compatible use for this building.
This area of the building, the rest is already.
Right. I would like to, I I guess I given, given the issues that have been raised. And Edna's questions about alternatives. I would personally like to continue the public hearing until all those other options have been explored. I think this is a significant building and significant questions have been raised and I for one am not prepared. To close this public hearing this evening until we've explored all the options that I think might be out there.
Yeah, and you know, if this building has been misattributed, I think that's an important thing for the board to know. I mean, it's not necessarily going to change our opinion of of what's being done, but it will help give it the proper weight.
All right, so I'd like, I'd like us to take the proper time to try and nail down some of these questions. Because once the decision's made, we can't go back one way or the other. So. I don't think in the long history of this building, another another extension will harm us in any way. To is anyone in disagreement with that?
I would agree, and in fact, I would say that I think we can come up with an alternative that does maintain that rule of windows with. Doors underneath.
Well, I would encourage you to go back and look at that and I would encourage you to invite HAPAC into the conversation.
And Mr. Lynch, I'm happy to work with you on this and to try and figure out attribution solidly. Out of the National Register nomination, all of those issues that you've raised, okay? So we're happy to work with you.
So everybody's satisfied? Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing until one Gretchen?
August first.
Okay, eight, one, six fifteen. All those in favor? Opposed extensions. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for your input and your attention. All right. Next up is Alderkill. And I think Jim, is any Carl is here. Carl, is there anything you want to say?
I understand the situation. We have actually managed to schedule a meeting directly with all the relevant parties at the D E C. For next week, so we hope to have any of the remaining issues that were outstanding and making your application complete. Worked out with them in person then or over Zoom. And then Jordan, did you have anything else?
Yes, there's just two things. So one of the things with the D E C is we need to be able to tell them. That the town is okay with us doing a 12-foot driveway, which I presume everyone knows is allowed by the zoning code. For a conservation subdivision for a shared drive. And thereby minimizing our impact as the D E C would like. I know the town is waiting for the D E C, but this one thing that the D E C is waiting. For from the town per their recent comments. So didn't know how we could affect that or if we can affect that.
I would turn to Jim and Michael to answer that question. I I know we're a little bit uncomfortable getting out ahead of D E C, but I would defer to them for their comments.
Melody, I think what we would probably do is speak to both Bob Lyon or Highway Superintendent and also Christian. Our engineering consultant, who's I assume familiar with the area and familiar with what's proposed. Give us an opinion and the ability of that to basically sustain what's required for, you know, safe and eager ingress and egress.
Okay.
Properties.
All right, so we can, we can, we can do that offline. Jim, do you agree?
No, I I was going to recommend the same thing. It's kind of like chicken and egg, but I think we have to get, you know. Our consult, you know, we have to get Bob and Christian to essentially sign off on it somehow or give their comments on it to the extent they can. Because it really got boiled down to them. It's a more an engineering issue to a degree at this point, so I I agree. That's the way to go.
That would be great. They did specifically say provide documentation from the town, so I I wouldn't think they would feel anyone was stepping on their toes.
Planning board members, I believe you all received copies of the correspondence from the state, correct? Had a chance to review it and know there's obviously an important amount of information that D E C doesn't feel it has yet. So I think at this point, we're going to continue the public hearing to a date and time to be determined. So it will not be rescheduled going month to month. We're just going to wait until we have all the information back from D E C and we know. That they are happy with all the information they've been provided and can permit this. Is everybody? On board with this? Everybody had a chance to look over what's outstanding?
Yes.
Okay. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing to a date and time? Jordan, I see.
All all good there. I just wanted as a little coda on the getting town documentation to D E C. That says hopefully what they're asking for that a 12-foot driveway width can work. May I be given the blessing of the planning board, I believe might be the right way of saying it to be. In correspondence with C P L. So there's a backstory and that's just that they weren't responding and. I happen to be in the area and stop by the office and talk to Christian and he said, well, why don't you wait till you get everything back to the D E C? Which I understand, but so there there's going to be a couple of questions that are valuable for me to broach with him, namely about the driveway. Now, you know.
Actually, actually, Jordan, Christian was in touch with us and followed up with us about your drop-in visit and. We agree with him that we we really don't want to bring them in until we have the information back from D E C. So I think we're going to proceed as we've outlined.
How does the development of their feedback work if I'm literally kept apart from the town engineer? I'm not.
I think he's, I think he wants to have the information back. From D E C before he gets involved. Jim, you you spoke to him personally. You might want to clarify that again.
Right, but what Jordan's asking for is for Bob and and what Michael and I think said is Bob and and Christian to decide, you know, if a 12-foot. Width is okay with them. By that information to D E C and that would be the extent of the discussion at this point. So I was just going to say, Jordan, if you want to send me a write-up, I can send it to Christian. Just ask him to get in touch with you when he looks at it. And then, you know, he can he can coordinate with Bob and get you whatever information on the 12-foot width. But after that, yeah, there's no more conversation really for Christian other than, you know, it's like you're back from D E C.
Right, so but another way of saying this is if I route any communications or requests for same through the planning board. That's the way of doing it, right? This is not let me talk to Christian without you. This is just how can we communicate? So.
I think you communicate through Jim.
Got it. Perfect.
I'll make, I'll make sure it happens. Send it to me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Melody, I'll let you know when that through, so we're all up to date on that.
Perfect.
Okay, I think I had a motion and a second. Did I not to continue the public hearing until August first? So all those in favor?
I thought it was to be determined.
It's yeah, it's undetermined.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm back on Amy compliment. You're absolutely right, Edna. Thank you for correcting me. It is to be continued to a date and time to be determined.
So move, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please. Thanks, Craig. All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed extensions. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Get a quick response.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Next up, Rockledge, 492 Ackert Hook Road condo unit site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands permit.
Melody, I'm recused from this.
Thank you, Edna, for reminding us. I see Mark here.
Oh, yes, I am. It's. Good evening, everyone. Mark Glominski representing. Rockledge project. So the two weeks ago made a submission to the planning board with with. You know, multiple items, a updated site plan which included. Some architectural drawings associated with the reason for the updated site plan. Just, you know, minor building, building reconfiguration, able to keep the. Building footprints of the. Revised architectural based on the revised architectural drawings of the. New unit configurations within the areas that we had previously designed and outlined. That has gone through initial review by both the town planning board and also with C P L. With regard to. You know, grading drainage and and stormwater management. So those site plans and the associated architectural footprints. And there were there, I believe, we also also included a rendering that was prepared by. Bob Fox Architecture that was included. In addition, initial reports prepared by C P L for both. Water supply. Water distribution, storage engineers report related to the water system. Which included the information that had been previously submitted to this board with regard to the groundwater. Exploration. That groundwater exploration that took place on the property that was also done by C P L. And then in addition to that, a a preliminary engineers report. Us also prepared by C P L with regard to the. Wastewater collection and also the wastewater treatment facility. So, you know, the, you know, those, those were the updated documents that were submitted, you know, for consideration at this meeting. I I ask if the if those items were forwarded to, you know, C P L for any review.
So Mark, so C P L did get those. I just wanted to correct. I think you missed both. C P L did not do the the reports for Rockledge. It was.
I'm sorry, it's W S P.
Yeah, just want to make that clarification. They haven't forwarded, yeah, they haven't forwarded the C P L. C P L's not finished a review.
Okay.
They'll they'll be in touch, but yes, they were forwarded. They have to see.
Too many three-letter.
Yes.
I apologize.
No, no problem.
Okay. Is that it, Mark?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Jim, comments?
I've just had a couple. Mark, thanks for kind of outlining what you submitted. That was a good good summary. Just a couple of quick. Zoom out here. The first one, you know, appreciate the renderings being submitted. I think the visualizations are great. They help kind of see what what it is that we're looking at going on the ground. You know, they help enhance what we're looking at with the site plan. I just had a question. You may not be able to answer them today, but the the renderings of the first floors. Show two large first floor walls without a window. It's this area right here. And it just, when I, when I first looked at them, usually, you know, I wouldn't get involved too much in windows, new construction, but I looked at it and it just kind of stood out to me that there are no windows on this big blank wall. And just wondering if if there was a reason for that. It appeared to be the chef's bedroom slash study and the Roosevelt kitchen.
Okay.
Just seems like they might benefit from a window. Obviously, in a bedroom, there's, you know, privacy concerns, but there are ways that that can be done. So that just kind of stood out to me. It's kind of this big blank wall, just something to maybe consider.
Okay.
The other question I had, the the detached structures that you were showing, are these the garages?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so those line up with the garages on the site plan. And then, yeah, I mean, all the comment was C P L need to take a look at this and we already covered that. So that was kind of my primary comments at this point.
Okay, um, planning board members, questions, comments, observations? I know this is new and we haven't really had a chance to digest it, but I'll open it up for anything you'd like to share or ask questions about. Okay.
Melody, one other thing I'd like to add is. So after our submission date. In June. You know, we had, we received some updated discharge parameters for the wastewater treatment facility. And so those have been incorporated in W S P's. Wastewater wastewater report. And so those will be forthcoming and I'll forward that information to. To Jim and the planning board to send along to C P L.
Okay.
Mark, send that to Gretchen, please.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Nope, no bumps. Thanks.
Okay, I'll then turn back to planning board members. Anyone wishing to comment or ask questions? Okay, um, this is a continuation of a public hearing. And so I will open it up. I see we have some members of the public here and I'll open it up to comment. Jim, would you handle that, please?
Yeah. So for anyone who'd like to speak, if you could either raise your hand or send me a message in the chat, I'd appreciate it. I will try and get to you in the order that I see your, your name come up here. Please limit, you know, the conversation to four or five minutes if you can and make sure we're discussing kind of new content. If we discussed it before, planning board members would certainly take it under advisement. First hand or comment I see is Linda Kagan. See.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate giving me an opportunity. Yeah, as the planning board knows, the Rhinebeck Coalition submitted petition highlighting several concerns regarding both the rural roads that will be Ackert Hook, Ly, Burger and Primrose. I know Primrose is not a rural road. It's a county road. And given the significant amount of horse bike and human pedestrian traffic on the road throughout the day and the dangers of using Ackert Hook as an access road, I think David Weiner will speak to this in a little more detail after I do. The other concern that is, you know, of the highest is the, the weight, the post-processed wastewater that currently, from my understanding, is designated to go into Fallsburg Creek. And while the developer has presented that it'll be crystal clear uncompromised water once it's processed. I don't know that from my, you know, quick reading of the recently submitted documentation, whether the D E C has made a determination of how that water would impact Fallsburg Creek and the many properties that it runs through. I know a neighbor of mine who has access to it. He and his kids fish in it. So there's clearly some environmental concerns. I don't know that they've been addressed and I would ask that the planning board seek an independent review, not simply the developers' review of those potential impacts. I think there are other issues. And I did have a question. I noted in one of the emails regarding, you know, the scheduling for today that the, I guess, the county, the town clerk had sent out that there was a two o'clock meeting just with the applicant. And I was wondering whether or not the public had access to either the notes or the conversations or if it was a Zoom access to the recording of that to understand sort of, you know, what's happening. You know, in the, throughout the process with respect to this, you know, undeniably controversial project.
Well, thank you, Linda. I'm not, I'm not sure what, Jim, I don't have any information about a two o'clock scheduled meeting.
I'm not sure what's sent out, but we didn't have a two o'clock meeting.
No. We.
Sent out by the town. I wasn't aware of it myself. I just noted it today and I.
When, Linda, when did they say this meeting was or did take place?
It was just scheduled. It was like a, I'm trying to find it in my email. But I'm happy to forward it to you. I mean, I don't know if that's sort of a standard process, you know, before proposal is presented. But I was just, you know, just obviously, you know, almost 500 Rhinebeck residents are, you know, sign the petition are very concerned and very anxious about a project of this size setting a precedent for utilizing, you know, basically density bonuses and other things that run contrary to the Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan and its goals regarding conservation.
Right. Well, I'm just trying to zero in on the meeting and I know.
I think it was the pre-con. There's a pre-con listed at two o'clock.
Yeah.
That pre-con had nothing to do with the application in front of us right now.
Right. And we don't have pre-cons at two o'clock in the afternoon.
No, we need to fix that calendar anyway. Yeah. I'll talk to Joan about that.
All right. So it was a non-event. Okay, Linda, is are you finished? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, my, 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 my general request, other than just with respect to Fallsburg Creek is that the town board utilized the seeker option to require independent reviews of both traffic, rural roads, everything. I just think that it would be a great idea and great for Rhinebeck to, you know, use this proposed project as an opportunity to find, you know, sort of a resolution that addresses both the, you know, needs of the community and also, you know, provide some of the, the benefits that the developer wants and find some sort of happy medium. And I think that that would be incredibly useful as a planning tool going forward.
Okay, thank you. Jim, who's next? I see David with his hand up.
Yeah. So Linda, before you go, I forgot to ask, can you just give us your name and address, please, for the record?
Sure. Linda Kagan, 373 Ackert Hook Road.
Thank you. David, can you give us name and address and then let's know what you'd like to say?
David Weiner, 306 Ackert Hook Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm primarily going to talk about traffic study, but I do just want to emphasize one point that before I do that, that the, the current proposal basically takes historic property that was designed with the building that was set in an estate to be a kind of a location of repose. And, and cutting up the property under this proposal really destroys that. And it, and it does so in a way that provides no public benefit. And I just want to make sure that that point, which has been raised before by Wayne Thompson, attorney Wayne Thompson, is not lost. It's, it kind of suggests to me that, you know, why not, if we're going to start cutting up a property that was designed to be a whole, why don't we just put a motel on the front lawn of the Vanderbilt estate? I mean, it would be kind of the same thing. But what I really want to talk about this evening is the traffic studies that have been submitted. This board must reject the developers' biased traffic study. Even on its own terms, the study is absurd and contradicts the town's comprehensive plan. The developers vendor applies suburban standards to a hilly, winding, narrow rural road and fails to take account of even other known future traffic generators in the area. Ostoundingly, the developers vendor fails to take notice of the substantial traffic that will be generated by the grassmere alone. The planning board's own consultant has raised the same issue in connection with the Red Wing dispute. I think that same thinking should be applied here. The planning boards, more absurdly, the vendor ignores significant use of the road by pedestrians, equestrians and bicyclists who have no shoulder available on, on many of the roads around Rockledge. The use of these roads by non vehic, non vehicular users is integral to maintaining the rural nature of the area as well as the safety of its residents and visitors as called for in the town comprehensive plan. Attorney Thompson and I have both written objections to this study. The planning board must agree, must engage an independent developer, developer funded study or traffic consultant in consultation with members of the community who oppose the development. I'd also like to just second some of the comments that Linda has made about the wastewater treatment plant. That is a major concern for the community. And as I understand it, as far as I can tell, to date, the developer has not complied with the June, July 2021 directive of the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health to submit to the New York Department of Environmental Conservation, an engineering report which evaluates the proposed discharge on the receiving waters. And if I'm wrong, I'd like to know exactly where that study is. Finally, I would just like to mention that there's significant public concern about this development. And at a bare minimum, we would appreciate it if these hearings concerning a major project like this would not occur following a holiday, a three day holiday weekend. Thank you.
Okay, who's next, Jim?
Let me take a look.
Carol. I see.
Yep. Carol, do you want to unmute your line? Okay, you're on.
Hi there. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just had a, a a couple of questions in the back of the news submissions and a couple of things on the previous submissions. With the, the wastewater treatment plant point, sorry, I've lost my, lost my notes. Raises a really interesting point about hydrogen sulfide gas, which is something that occurs in a septic and a wastewater treatment plant of this nature when it's underutilized. And given the, given that my, my understanding is that the development is meant to be built in phases, starting with the historic structures and then with one pod of the multifamily dwellings and in a sage approach. That may have changed, but I think that that was what was explained to us at one point. It, it, it just points out in the report that underutilization can result in the hydrogen sulfide gas, which is also known as sewer gas being discharged. And I wonder too, if that wasn't the source of the odor previously when daytop was there as opposed to the sludge that people had sort of pinned it on at the time. So I'd just be, just flag that and for the town, for the planning board to consider as they're, as they're going through this. And then secondly, I've noticed, I don't know whether this is, I'm trying to understand when the D E C updates wetlands and things like that. But if you, if you look at the, what's been submitted, it's based on a survey of the wetlands on the property that were conducted in 2013 and 2014. And I think we all recognize a lot has changed since then. If you look at the parcel access map now, you can see that half of the wastewater treatment plant is, is, is in a D E C wetland, not just bordering it. And so I know that that's not a highly accurate map, but I would encourage us to seek an updated survey of where the wetlands are, particularly as the waste treatment plant sits between wetland F and wetland G on the, on the map, on the site plan. And it's quite possible that those two have been extending or even coming together over the, over the past year. And that's something that we need in past years and that's something we need to keep an eye on. And then the other thing I'd like to flag for consideration at this stage in the development is the proposed relocation of the driveway by 130 feet to the south of where the north driveway currently comes out. I just very much like to understand how that improves sightlines because while I'm certainly no expert, it's taking the exit very close, closer to the crest of a blind, blind turn at the crest of a hill and, 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 and has it coming out from land that is below the level of the road. So it will, that would have to be built up. And even still, it would be very limited sight for people using the driveway and also for anybody coming north on Ackert Hook Road. So those are just some things that I wanted to flag that I thought might take some time to, to work through. And so I wanted to flag them sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Jim, I see Ruben's hand raised.
Yes, Ruben, they go up next.
Yes. Hi, thanks for taking my, my, my hand up. I don't know if you can see my video. I'm trying to put it on again and it says that, here, wait, start my video. Okay, there we go. Sorry. So two, two comments. One is there's a very large depressed area that is right off of Ackert Hook Road at the, near the entry to the property. And I'm wondering if it's been considered that that could be a holding and distribution basin for the treated water, maybe making a pond or something of that sort. It's a very large area and seems that it would take a lot of this crystal clear water that's going to be coming out of the wastewater treatment plant. So that was comment number one. Comment number two is just stepping back. This development is just plain and simple, too big. It's twice as big as I think it would be, that would be allowed by right. And I think that that's one of the major concerns and comments that has been gone over and over and over again. And I would like the planning board to address, you know, address this in terms of why in contrary to the comprehensive plan and to the rural nature of that area that this is being approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Jim, do we have anyone else?
Yeah, I believe Barbara, let's see. Barbara Lewis, did you have a comment or question?
No, we're waiting for the workforce housing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just before anybody else speaks, I do need names and addresses announced at the beginning, please.
I'm sorry, I forgot address again. Sure, I didn't know. So you're still on. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Cara Keywell, 467 Ackert Hook Road.
And Ruben, could you do the same, please?
Sure. Ruben Lee Paber, 45 Hagerty Hill Road.
Thank you. Gretchen, I'll try and be better about that. Patty Lencel, I believe you're up next.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. To start, I just want to review the character of the Fallsburg Creek. It is nominally an intermittent creek. Just a few weeks ago, it was bone dry. So I want you to visualize the effluent of the output of the wastewater treatment plant going into a dry intermittent creek and then proceeding into a pond where some children fish, crossing over Ly Road, wiggling around around a lot of people's properties and into wetlands on our property. The creek disperses into a wetland. It then continues around and crosses Ackert Hook and drops through a beautiful scenic waterfall into another very, very large wetland. So I just want you all to have a picture in your mind of where the output of this wastewater treatment plant is going. I find it quite horrifying, the fact that the only material flowing past my house will be the output, on occasion, will be the output of this wastewater treatment plant. I read through the submission that was the report from the engineering company, the wastewater treatment plant. And it looks like they are not suggesting very many changes. So my question is, they talk about waste as if it's only human waste, but we all know that people put everything down their drains. And there's no way to control what people put down their drains. I'm very concerned that the wastewater treatment plant will not filter bleach. It won't filter motor oil. It won't filter any number of things that people have been known to put down their drains. any number of things that people have been known to put down their drains. There was no mention of Duchess County Wastewater Agency. When I had questioned the wastewater treatment plant in the past, I've been told not to worry, Duchess County Wastewater Agency is going to be taken care of at all. Well, I see no mention of them in this, so I'm curious. I would ask the board to please get an answer to that question. What happened to that plan? Is Duchess County Wastewater Agency involved or not? We had also requested that a homeowner's agreement be outlined that would tell us just how wastewater treatment plant was going to be, was going to be managed and engineered. And so I'd look for the board to ask, ask about that part of the submission also. When, when reviewing the engineer's report, the well water sources, I noticed that there's hard water coming out of the wells and that a water softener is going to be required on at least one of the wells. The report says that that water is going to go right into the wastewater treatment plant. So then I looked back to try to reconcile where that water was in the usage charts and I could not reconcile that. So I would ask the board to please look into that, find out, you know, just what, what is the impact of the water softening on the gallons per day into the wastewater treatment plant? I noticed that the speedies permit, to my knowledge, has not been approved or submitted. I would ask the board to please not consider this application complete without a completed speedies permit. And also, my main concern, living so close to the Fallsburg Creek, is that, you know, we're in a late 1700s house. Our house is inundated by the water in the Fallsburg Creek, by an intermittent creek. It means that sometimes it's dry and when a storm comes, as it does frequently, a couple of times a year, it backs up right into our house. And so I would really appreciate not having poison and poop in my house. So I think that's all I can think of to say right now. Thanks.
I'm sorry if you did this already. Could you give us your name and address?
Patty Lankto, L A M C T O, at 220 Fly Road.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Looks like Jim, I, your hand raised?
Yes, thank you.
Can you give us your full name and your address, please?
Yes, Jim Ingles, 9 Ackard Hook Extension. I would just like to build on Mr. Liebhaber's statement of the size of the project. It's practical, it's just three units short of three times what would be allowed without seeking variances. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. I think we have more information to bring in, so.
I wanted to make a comment.
I certainly, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I asked Jim. I'm sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand. My name is Wendy Maitland and I live at 636 River Road in Rhinebeck.
Okay, Wendy, proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that I, first of all, just going back to the beginning of the comments, I actually signed this petition that was referred to earlier by Linda Kagan. And I signed it inadvertently and by accident. And I think it's important to note because it was made, you know, it was expressed that this is highly controversial and 500 people signed it. Well, I'm not sure how many people knew what they were signing because I was presented with something, a one pager, and it was about keeping Rhinebeck beautiful. And that's what the person whose name I don't know, who presented me the petition, told me that this petition was about. I was at the dump, actually, and I was, you know, hurrying to leave the dump because I was finished and had someplace to be. So I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, I'm not sure that every, and then later I read the papers that I was given after I signed it and realized that it was about this project. And so it may be an inaccurate statement to say that those 500 people even know what they were signing. So I want to make that very clear. And also, I've spoken with a hiking trail master who told me that there is in, in process something that is attempting to be organized to create a hiking trail from the entrance of Rock ledge, connecting it to to the Winnicke Land Trust area on the preserve on Fly Road. And I think that's highly relevant to understand that it was also stated that the developer isn't doing anything for the public. And I remember on a meeting that I was on a couple of months ago, or a few months ago, I'm not sure when, the developer speaking about that and, and offering to do that and saying that that's something that was being explored. So, you know, I think it's important that we have a balanced view here from people in the Rhinebeck community. Because from what I heard, it's not the case that we have a developer here who doesn't care and isn't doing diligence and isn't concerned about water and water waste and pure water. And my understanding is that it's a Duchess County function rather than a town function to approve the water, just like any other water that is under the auspices of the county, Duchess County.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, so I see some other hands raised. I'm just going to remind everyone that we're here to take public comment that's not been offered before. We're not here to debate the comments of other people who have spoken. So if the people whose hands are raised have something new to add to the conversation, I think we'll move ahead, but we're not, I don't want to encourage this. It's a public hearing, not a public debate. So, Jim?
All right, Carol.
Sorry about that. That was fast. So yeah, I just, I did, I, I did want to, this, this does have to do with the proposed path. And just to point out that the way it was, and it's interesting that a trail master is looking at that. And I, you know, welcome seeing more details.
Are you, are you, are you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't really want to debate the comments of someone else. It's not, we're not here tonight to counter someone's opinion. So I just want to ensure that you're offering new information.
I guess this would be, this would be reasons why a path, the proposed path is not, is not very beneficial to the public. I don't know if it falls into that category.
I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, I just, we'll keep it very brief. We have a path. It's called a road. It connects to Fly Marsh. And a path through the woods would both be seasonal and be limited to only the most able-bodied people. And there is no parking except at the Fly Marsh end of the trail, which is already heavily taxed. So while it's a very nice gesture, I'm not sure how much of a benefit it is. And I'm sorry, that does sound like a debate.
Okay, Jim?
All right, Patty?
Hey, I just wanted to request that information about this path, whatever it is, be vetted and clarified because it's my understanding that it couldn't happen unless it went through my property. So that's not on the table. So I would like to make sure that it's not misinformation.
Okay, good point. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I raised my hand.
Okay, there you are. I see your hand. David?
David? David, you're muted.
David, you're muted. David, you're muted.
I know, sorry, it just took me a second. Not facile with this stuff. Yeah, I just, I just want to add some information about the way the petition was conducted. As one of the people who did conduct it.
Just remind you, David, this is not a debate.
This is new information that I'm trying to give you that contradicts some information that you were provided with.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not debating with this real estate agent who spoke about the petition.
David, David.
Okay, the
Unnecessary.
The petition was, the full language of the petition was available to people who wanted it. And in addition to that, there was an information sheet. So I can't speak to what everybody who was passing out the petition did, but generally speaking, people had full information available to them when they signed the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mel, Linda would like to make another comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to reinforce what Patty mentioned with respect to requesting that the, the planning board not consider this a complete submission. I think tonight, every, many people have raised significant issues and gaps of information and dated materials that would undermine the planning board's integrity, which obviously we all hold in high esteem and very much, you know, would ask again, as we have previously, that when the next opportunity for a public hearing can, can occur, we have time to actually digest the information recently submitted, that there be a dedicated meeting just for this proposal and that the public be given significant notice ahead of time to give them an opportunity to take part in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
I believe that's it, Mel, but let me just double check. Don't see anyone else with their hand up and there are no other comments, Mel. So I think we're good to move forward.
So I think we're at the point where we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing. Mark, any preferences? Are you looking to come back in a month?
Yes, please.
Okay, so that would be, that would be August 1st. Gretchen, is that right?
Yes.
So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until 8/1/22?
So.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. We'll see. Thank you. It will see you, Mark, in a month.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, all right, last, no, we've got two more things this evening. The next one is a public hearing for Red Wing 286 White Schoolhouse Road Mining Scale and Scale House driveway site plan and special use permit. Jim, I'll turn it over to you. I think we simply have a notice to read.
Yep, just a notice I wanted to put out there. This was noticed both in the agenda that was put out as well as a separate notice that was on the town website. This comes from the planning board attorney, John Lyons, and it just reads, as you can see on the screen, Red Wing Properties Inc. has commenced litigation against the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck zoning board of appeals due to certain allegations that have been made by Red Wing in that litigation and upon advice of the planning board's counsel, Red Wing's application is being taken off the planning board agenda until further notice.
Jim, is that just a statement or do we need to motion that?
I would say you should probably make a motion that you're going to take it off the agenda until further notice upon discussion with our planning board attorney. Yes.
I, Craig, is that a motion?
I will make that motion to remove Red Wing from the agenda until further notice.
Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And I'm accused, Melody.
Michael is recused. Jim, do you think a motion and second is all right or should we call the board on this one?
I might as well pull the board.
All right, I think I will. I'm going to pull the board. Michael's excused. Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, everyone. Last up, we have the continuing discussion of the Hamlet Workforce Housing Project. And Jim, I'll turn it over to you to sort of give us a summary of where we are and what, what we've heard and where we think we want to go.
All right.
And I welcome Ken and Andy and Sean to the meeting. I guess it's just the three of you this evening, is that right?
No, there should be a few others on the phone, on the call.
Okay, well, I only see you right now, so we'll start. Jim, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, so I think where we are at the moment is that we did discuss this, we discussed this in several meetings, May 16th, June 6th and June 20th, and now here on July 5th. I did run through very quickly what the draft memo was, where I consolidated the comments that you had all sent to me. Kind of put them out there over the overall headers. You have all seen the draft. I then got additional comments since the last meeting two weeks ago and included those in highlighted text so that you could see exactly where the changes have come from. And really, I guess where we are now, which is not in this memo, is for the planning board to decide how you would like to move forward. Technically, we either need to make a decision tonight or ask for another extension of the town board. So as I put in my memo, let me bring it up here, one second here, that I had sent out for the meeting tonight, I think, you know, so you've seen my comments and some of the additional comments. I think where we are right now, unless I'm mistaken, is that unless anyone has any issues with any of the comments that were in the draft memo, I think it seemed like after the last meeting, which is 95% of that memo, everyone was generally okay with comments. So if we're looking to do a referral recommendation, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's safe to say that first part of my referral, which was the town Rhinebeck planning board, upon referral from the town of Rhinebeck, town board has discussed the Hamlet project proposal utilizing the workforce housing and other zoning code regulations over the course of several public meetings and developed a list of general comments for the town board to consider. So I guess the first part of my question is, does anyone have any issues with the summarization of all the comments I received into the memo I sent out? Or is it generally looked good to you?
I think it's very thorough.
It's a good summary of the comments.
Good job.
Yeah, I think you represented what I had written accurately.
So with that, then I think we're through part one, which is, you know, we have a memo that will move forward. So that's kind of part one of our recommendation for this referral. You know, the next step, I think, is, is to decide if the planning board wants to provide an actual recommendation for the project. So we do have comments for the town board's consideration and the memo, we'll get that forwarded. And I think we're good there. Where, where do we stand on a referral recommendation? Do we think, oh, how do I start this? I guess I put, there, there are kind of two ways to do it. We need to decide if, if the planning board has come to general consensus on a recommendation or if we have not come to general consensus, in which case I think we just forward the memo as is. So do we want to do a, an actual referral recommendation? If we have general consensus on the path forward, I think that there are three potential options, kind of high-level options for recommendations. Acceptance of the project as Acceptance of the project as submitted, subject to addressing the comments found in the memo for advancement through the next steps as outlined in the code. Asking the town board to continue their review and assessment of the project as a concept plan and further discuss and address the issues, concerns, and opportunities identified within the memo, which would be not advancing it through the next steps. Or third option, I think, would be rejection of the project application as submitted due to the following factors. And again, this is your recommendation of the town board. I want everyone to be clear, this is not a planning board project at this time. It is a referral to the Planning Board. So we're sending comments back to the town board for their consideration. With that, I think I'll kind of open it up to, I'm sorry, open it up.
Jim, do you have those three options?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at them. I didn't share.
That's okay. I think, I think if we had them in front of us, it would be easier to, okay, all right.
Sorry about that.
So we'll open it up to comment at this point, I think, from Planning Board members.
Well, I guess I would start. I know that Edna circulated to all of us a recommendation not to approve this project with rationale also attached to it and suggestions of how we should be going forward with workforce housing, affordable housing in the town in the future. So I think that was presented as a recommendation to the town board.
Okay. Um.
Michael, comments were provided by Edna. I do have those, you know, in a document, if you want me to put them on the screen.
Well, I just, I just would, yes, I would say rather than just comments, it really was a recommendation for the town board, the town planning board, to consider whether they would approve or disapprove as giving an actual recommendation to the town board as rather than Jim's comments.
I think it's a two, I mean, from, I certainly read carefully Edna's comments and agree with most of them. I would, I would bifurcate them. I think right now our task is to respond to the referral, and so I would not make it all part of the same recommendation back. I would keep our comments on how we can improve the process separate from our response to the referral. And that's not to say we can't do both, but I certainly would not prefer to have them together in one resolution.
Fair enough.
I agree, Melody.
Because I think we're talking about two different things here. Right now, what we're doing is a specific response to a referral from the town board regarding what they've looked at and what they've been reviewing. The other is how do we think we can improve the process? And I think those two different
Good point. That's a good distinction.
So. Okay. I'm waiting. Edna, did you, you said you had trouble with that?
I said I do not have any problem with that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misheard you. Um, other planning, Craig?
Yeah, is this would it be appropriate for us to first of all, recognize the compelling need for workforce housing and the compatibility of that, you know, with the, with the town comprehensive plan? But just question the suitability of this particular site. You know, pending I don't know, changes or modifications or additions that the developer might make. I think as it stands, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be willing to put my approval on this.
So is there, are you recommending an adaptation of Recommendation Action 2 that would get closer to what you're saying, or? I'm trying to get us to coalesce around a particular train of thought here. Let me, while I let you think, because you're scratching your head.
Yeah, yeah, I know, and I'm trying to, I mean, is there merit in postponing this and, you know, continuing the hearing? Is it, is it that much of an iterative process? Or is this just something that we kick back to the town board and then something else comes back at us? Because as Michael pointed out, this is not, this is just a referral. It's not an application.
Understanding that you know, the understanding that this is the most you know, that this is the opportunity that we have to shape it at the beginning of the process, knowing it's going to go back and forth. So I don't have a perfect answer to that, but I would open it up. Are there other members of the Planning Board who have comments that are pertinent to the three recommendations Jim's put forward? So um we have several options. Jim, was that you wanting to talk?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, I'm just saying we have three draft recommendations. We also have the option to continue the discussion by asking the town board for continuation of the time period that we can review this. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, we could certainly ask. I mean, the clock technically runs out tomorrow, but we could ask for an extension. Yeah, and I guess my thought would be if the Planning Board is ready to move forward, maybe the way to do this is decide if Recommendation Action 1, 2, or 3 are appropriate, and then add any detail to that if we wanted to do, if you wanted to do so. And that may or may not include comments from Edna. If Edna wanted to put those up on the screen and move those forward for thought.
Melody, this is, this is Joe. Just a quick question. When you say opportunity to shape this, does that mean at this existing location, or is that open up the possibility of shaping it somewhere else?
Oh, well, I think right now I think what we, I believe what Jim has done in summarizing the comments that we've provided, and I believe that separate from ours, we receive comments, extensive comments from the CAB and from HAPAC. Is that correct, Jim? And they are separate from ours?
Yes, they are their own comments.
They have their own comments. So the town will be receiving our detailed comments, the CAB and the HAPAC I believe that, I'm trying to follow the process, I think, as Andy has used the word earlier, it's awkward. To say the least, we are now presenting to the town board the things that we find concerning or of interest to the town board as they continue to review this. I don't think we're here to tell them what to do, but to tell them what we feel are the concerns that have been raised in the community. And I, by that, Joe, I think I mean, if we give them this information, then they are at liberty to have the conversation with the applicant about how this project may change to address the concerns that have been raised. Does that make any sense to anybody?
Melody, could I clarify? I think in answer to Joe's question, what we are presented with is a specific project for a specific piece of property.
Right.
Most of the concerns that have been expressed about the project relate to the facets of the property itself.
Right.
It gets very important, from what Craig said, that we make it clear we support affordable housing, we support workforce housing. I, what, when it was in Edna's three points was that we were looking for a process which looks widely around the town for potential areas to do things like this, to carry out these projects, not to just this one specific site. But tonight, we are being asked to give a recommendation, or at least comments, on a specific project, on a specific piece of property. And so my reading of this and most of the comments is that the problems with this project are the property, not that it's workforce housing or affordable housing, but it is not suited to this type of a project. And the recommendation that I would support is that this project on this site, this site should not be the place where the town goes ahead with an affordable housing project. I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's the appropriate place to do it. But I think we clearly want to make it clear to the town board that we fully support the effort to bring affordable workforce housing to the town of Ryanbeck.
Okay. Um.
If, if we go that way and we don't include the idea of, of number two and number three that I was recommending, when would we do that? It seems to me useful to get these thoughts to the town board, if not in one document, at least kind of at the same time.
All right. Um, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Edna, in terms of your comments or the idea behind it. I just want to keep it clean in terms of, here's the response to the referral, and here are additional thoughts. So I'm still lobbying for it being two recommendations.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking about timing.
Okay, Michael has made a, Michael, it sounded like
I will make that a motion.
What, 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 what would be your motion?
My motion would be that the Planning Board believes because of planning issues and characteristics of the site, it is being, you know, has been referred to as, it's a site to be rezoned for workforce housing for this project, is not suitable for that sort of a project for any number of reasons attached to the characteristics of the property, and we therefore reject, or I don't know how you want to put it, reject this project at this site.
Well, that, that would follow Jim's proposed Recommendation Action 3.
And I'll so move if you would like a motion at this time.
Well, we have a motion is, is there a second to Michael's?
I'll second it for just a bit of discussion. I think that you do need to give, at least briefly, why you think that's the case.
I think Michael stated that.
And I think the why is contained in the comments of the memo, which will also be going forward. I think that that supports.
I think, those are That's correct. I think that is important, though, at some point, perhaps Melody has a second motion tonight, that if the Planning Board is agreeable, that the other comments about where we go from here, how we should move forward. And I think it's very important that in our zoning law, which basically is guiding the town board's effort here, it speaks of a collaborative process early on and to get the public involved, do things which have not happened at all. We're getting this at the tail end. And I think that that's one of the problems of, that it has not been a broadly transparent process, and I think that that hurts the process. I think it also gets people concerned when something is given to they finish something of this significance and they didn't see it coming.
Okay, your point is well taken. Right now, we have a motion in a second to, I think, expand Jim's Recommendation Action 3 by adding on factors that would lead to our rejection. I would like to open it up to comment from other Planning Board members while we have the motion in the second. Um. So let me see where we are in terms of a summary. We have a motion in the second. We also have the desire to forward to the town board, perhaps in a separate Recommendation Observations that we've made as we've been refer, revert, excuse me, re, reviewing this referral. Are we comfortable that those are two separate comments and responses?
Yes, it's just that I think that the factors need to be stated.
Absolutely. And I think Michael certainly illustrated those, as have you, in what you sent to us. Jim, are you comfortable filling in the factors?
Yeah, I think I have those from, from the information that's been submitted.
So Jim, do you want to provide a sort of summary as to what this recommendation will say so that we can call a vote?
I can do that. Before I do, Andy has raised his hand, Melody. I just wanted to note that.
I, okay, all right. We'll offer Andy the opportunity to enter any information, Andy. I lost you somewhere.
Thank you, Melody. I just want to point out a couple of things. You know, the project is still technically in the concept phase. This is really still just for a zoning change. And the, I want to also point out that workforce housing currently is only permitted in two zoning locations in the town right now. One is this site, and the other is a site on the north side of the village that is significantly smaller and constrained by wetlands. So, so there's that, but also as far as the location of the site itself, forget, you know, if we set aside, you know, the steep slopes and the traffic, just for now, you know, the location of the site meets all the criteria that are in the code as far as access to public utilities, access to public recreation and the village, you know, we're providing sidewalks to get people there. You know, there's, there's limited, you know, there's going to be limited impacts to visually, to this, to the adjoining properties. You know, we're adjacent to the Town Highway Garage on one side, as well as some open space and Wells Manor. You know, those are the, the main areas that are affected. You know, so as far as the location itself, it really is a good location for this type of a development. So I just want to point out that, you know, although we understand your concerns about, you know, you know, the comments that you've made about traffic, you know, about the, the design standards, those are things that can be tweaked later. I mean, this is still, like I said, still in the concept phase, so I would just encourage you to consider the fact that, you know, we can make, we can still make changes and that, you know, once, if the town board were to you know, approve the zoning change, we would still have to come back to this board for site plan approval. So I just, I just want to point that out before you reject the project on whole.
I, thank you, Andy.
Can I, ma'am, chair, can I say something?
Uh, Jim, do you want to continue to take comment?
Well, Melody, I mean, that's, that's up to you. That's fine. I'm actually typing away a quick.
Okay, I, you know.
Maybe, maybe one more comment, then we can.
Certainly. Happily, Ken, please proceed.
Bear with me. I caught a very bad cold from the grandkids over the weekend. Uh, I think I started my career 30 years ago, that's just kind of developing workforce house. Every single public hearing, and I've been through probably 30 of them, every single public hearing, I have heard it, those public hearings, some of which I'm hearing tonight. This town needs workforce house. We know we need workforce house. We know we have a need for workforce house. It just doesn't work here. It just doesn't work here. And in the beginning, the first 10 years of my career, I would move the project to another location and try to make it work and and a different set of people would show up to public hearing and say the same thing. What I've also found over a period of years is, once I build these things, one of my first big projects, the day I showed up with a backhoe, the person who stopped the, or who was very vocal to public hearings, he ran up to me and said, is there any way I could help get her aunt and her cousin in a apartment? So my point is that it's easy to recognize the need for affordable house and just pass it off and say, no, not here. I've been through that for 30 years. My experience has taught me that that's not the case. So with all due respect to the commenters and so forth, I don't mean any disrespect. I'm talking from my own personal experience. I've been doing this for 30 years. I built over 2,000 workforce housing units. And I've been through those public hearings, and every town, every town starts the same way. This site here is ideal for this spot. As Andy just pointed out, the other two spots are irrelevant, constrained. And I think that was pointed out back in 2019, but the comments you'll hear at the public hearing that I've heard at the public hearing the last 30 years is the same story. We need workforce housing, just not here. I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, but also I would, I certainly respect both Andy and Ken's comments. I think they're important for us to hear. I don't think that Recommendation Action 3 precludes the town from continuing to talk with the applicant. We're simply referring back the comments that we've made. And there's still, I think, room for the town to weigh in and continue to talk with the applicant. So Jim, where are you on this?
I think I'm at the same point, you know, that we were just a minute ago, Melody, that we have essentially two recommendations. We're going to have one that would be included at the beginning of the memo of comments that have been pulled together. So it's right up at the beginning saying, this is the recommendation of the Planning Board. And, you know, due to the factors noted in the memo below, so essentially the memo itself will support, you know, the, the recommendation. And, you know, due to the factors noted in the memo below. So essentially the memo itself will support, you know, the, the recommendation. I think I've heard the, you say that the planning board wants to move forward. And then the other one will be that the request to town board consider items related to process and factors and development of workforce housing. I'll have to reword that a little bit. But essentially coming up with two, two recommendations, referrals back to the town board. Again, this is, this is a referral from the planning board. This is not a planning board project. And all of these documents will become public record when the town board continues the discussion on their end. As, as it would with any other type of letter, comment letter that comes in for a project.
And Jim, there's one other thing I think is important to point out. This is an advisory recommendation from the planning board. We have no yes or no over this project. This does not preclude the town board for proceeding on this site. It does not preclude the town board for continuing to work with this particular developer. It's our opinion. It's our recommendation on the information we have been given. But by no means does this stop a project. We don't have the authority to do that because as you've pointed out, this is not a project coming before the planning board for a permit site plan review or anything like that.
Uh, Melody, I, I would also like to just add a comment, and that is I am sure other members of our board do not want to limit sites for workforce housing. What we want is to broaden the possibility of sites for workforce housing as is recommended by our comprehensive plan, which suggests that the town board look at areas adjacent to and around the village and rezone those for walkable neighborhoods where workforce housing and other market rate housing could be put into place that is integrated with the village.
Thank you.
That's what I was trying to propose here in this full recommendation.
And I certainly think that can be incorporated into the second recommendation we're talking about. I don't think any of us have issues with the language. So Jim, we have recommendation number one, which is your expanded version of recommendation action three. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I think if we're looking to move forward to recommendations this evening, one regarding the specific referral from the town board, that that one would follow your recommendation action three with you adding to the rejection of the proposed application due to the following factors, the subsequent language that would, so could I move, could I ask for a motion? And I may have already had it. I'm losing track of things here. But I think Michael made the recommendation. I think Edna seconded it. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, you are.
And so if there's no further comment, could I poll the board on that recommendation? And I just have to remember who we all are. So Michael.
Hi.
Um, Edna.
Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Now, Jim, we have a second recommendation, which is a recommendation to the town board, which I believe summarizes thoughts we've had on how to involve the process going forward and how to involve planning board earlier in the process. And I'm, I'm summarizing here, but Jim, are you comfortable with that? And I think a lot of that was laid out in Edna's earlier email, correct?
Yes. And, and I essentially have just been typing a recommendation, almost exactly what you just said, Melody, that requesting the town board to consider items, work on the language, recommending, I'm sorry, let me start again. Requesting the town board to consider items related to process and factors and development of workforce housing within the town, involve boards and committees earlier in the process. And then we will have additional comments that I'll follow based on our conversations.
All right. Could someone, would someone like to make that motion?
Um, just a sec. Are we also going to recommend that the town board establish a committee to identify these priority growth areas adjacent to the village?
I think that would be a specific part of the general recommendation. So generally we're asking the town board to consider certain items and factors related to workforce housing within the town. And those will come out as specifics.
Okay.
Specific action, specific action items, I guess I call, under the recommendation.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Should I have a second? Any comments, questions before I pull the board? All right. So let me.
Not going to be heard here. We've been here for two, two and a half hours. It's the question. That's all. I can't mute. I can't put my hand up. I don't know. I'm sorry.
This is not a public hearing.
Well, that wasn't evident from the, from the, from the minute, from the agenda. I'm sorry.
Jim, am I incorrect here?
No, it's not a public hearing. It's under town board referral. It's the same as we do all referrals. It's a referral discussion. That's why we could have held it earlier in the evening if we wanted to. It's not a public hearing.
I, I would put out, I won't say anymore, but I would put out that we attended the town board meeting when this was discussed. And they kicked it to, they kicked their, the whole, the whole process to the planning board and sent us there. But that, so that was a little bit, you know, that was delusional or that was.
Okay.
I'll be quiet.
Okay.
I apologize for any confusing information.
Last thing that I would ask is, is there any, this comes upon us with the character, change the town and there are many kinds of grounds to your process, which are, which we may disagree with, and we have no ability, is there, for example, any way for us to get further information than to see it in the newspaper after it's already been decided? For example, the, Jim, the, the, the information, this memo and so forth that you've shown, are any, do we have possibility of access to any of those things?
You will.
It all becomes public information after it's accepted by the planning.
After you've done it. That doesn't help.
No, 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 no. This is simply information being referred back to the town board. And until we conclude the meeting tonight with a vote, it does not become something that's available. And so once it goes back, Jim will make sure that this information is available and you will be able to see all the comments that have been brought together and summarized. It's still part of the process.
Right. We're very willing and fair people, but we want to be part of this process.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and there will, and, and, and the, going forward, there will be public hearings in the future, but this is not one this evening.
I, I would just last thing then, our, our, our first experience with the planning board was with Astor Gardens. And everything there had, with that, you were there, Melody. Everything had been already decided in advance and we, we had a futile years and nothing has changed the town more. So many of the characteristics or the, the bases for action are, are, are stated in broad terms, but the better, the benefit are always to, it's always put in a very concentrated way to individuals or owners. And we would like to be able to challenge bases for action at an, as a stage sufficient to influence the process within proper order. So that, that information, that information sequence, it's important for us to get in time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. Um, all right. I believe I have, I believe, although I've lost track of motion in the second.
You do.
And so let me poll the board again. Craig, this is on the second resolution. Joe.
Hi.
Sean. Edna.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
And I vote aye. I believe that that concludes the business of this evening. If there is nothing else to come before the good of the committee, I would ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, everyone. Your interest and your time. Have a good evening.